We'll go ahead and get started with October 21st, City Council Work Session, and I'll turn it over to the City Manager, Mr. Sanders.
Good morning, Mayor, Councilmembers, and all public. Thank you for coming in this morning. We do have three topics that we need to get through, so I'm going to have Dalton come on up. We're going to start with the odor monitoring. This is a check-in opportunity and hear a little bit about the expansion of the program.
All right. Good morning, Mayor, and members of the council. My name's Dalton. I'm the Neighborhood Inspections Division Administrator, and today I'm here to talk to you about our odor monitoring program. We've had our monitors in place for about 11 months now. But we've got data for 11 months. They've been in place for just over 12 months now, so we're here to give an update. Here's the agenda of how we're going to go through this today. It's not going to be nearly as technical and in-depth as our most recent discussion back in May. But we'll start out doing a little deeper dive on complaint analysis. And that's complaints, not just from this monitoring program, but complaints that we've received since 2016. We'll do an analysis of the weather to kind of confirm that our devices are working as they should. We'll do an air quality analysis. And then, if you remember last time, we got into a critical day analysis. We're going to do that again, but we're not going to get into quite the detail that we did last time. I'm going to give you an update on kind of how we're heading and what we're doing with our new alerting system. We're going to talk about kind of how we've been investigating odor issues and complaints for the last six, 12 months. Give a high-level overview of our findings. And then we've got partners from Smithfield and Darling here today. And I've asked that they present on kind of what they're doing and how they're contributing to this partnership. Then we'll end it with question and answer. So here's our complaints since 2016. Obviously, the yellow bar at the end is this year. It's interesting, if you look at you look at 2020 and 2021, there wasn't any change in the operation at either Smithfield or Darling. And so it's not that the odors weren't coming, it's that people weren't around to smell the odors. They're more home, more often they were at home than they were not. There was a spike in 2023, but in 2023 and 2024, we've been making a concerted effort to encourage people to call in their odor complaints, so we can treat those complaints as a key part of the data, and we keep saying that. Here's our complaints by month since 2016. They're broken out by season. And we'll get into much greater detail on this. It kind of illustrates the point I'm trying to drive home, but we can see that the majority of our complaints come in in the summer and in the fall. And again, 2020 and 2021, significantly less odor complaints, but that can be attributed more to people not being around to report the complaints, 100% more than it is to operations at the facilities. Here's another chart, kind of showing the breakdown by season. Up at the top, we've got winter and spring. Comparably less complaint data. Summer and fall, comparatively higher complaint data. And then right here, this 181 complaints that we got last fall, that is when we kicked off our odor complaint, our odor control program, odor monitoring program. We built a portal on the website where people can do it online. Sorry. We'll accept complaints pretty much any way they come in, make it easy for people. And we started advertising on the news, on the website, social media. Please call in your complaints. And so, ask and you shall receive. We got a lot of them. So this breaks it down by month and by year. Again, I'm going to just keep pointing this out. COVID, very, very low complaint data. Not a whole lot of complaints up through about June for most years, and then through October. So this is just kind of drilling into the trend that we identified earlier, is that lower complaints in the spring and in the winter, higher complaints in the summer and in the fall, 2020 and 2021. Very low complaints.
And could you go back to that? Because if the theory is that folks aren't around to complain, I mean, I sort of, I get that in January and February. I don't know that that provides as much of an explanation in March, April, May. I mean, because folks are outside, looking to enjoy being outside in those months.
Absolutely.
And is there an operational difference in the, because that strikes me as, I mean, it's a reasonable theory, but it doesn't strike me as what would actually be the explanatory.
Sure. We actually have a slide on that here in a minute, but it goes more towards weather patterns, seasonal weather patterns.
Yeah, I was going to say the absence of people was just in 20 and 21.
Yeah, 2020 and 2021.
That does not explain outside those years.
Can I answer your question? Kind of. Sure. All right. So if we break it down by day of the week, Monday through Friday, get more complaints. Saturday and Sunday, lower complaints. And then again, I'm going to just, you're probably tired of hearing me say it, I'm going to say it one more time. 2020 and 2021, very, very low complaints. When we receive complaints, it's important that we get the time, date, and location that the complaint or the odor was observed, as well as the description of the odor. So the time, we're talking about time now, not just day of the week, month of the year. The time that we get complaints usually comes in in the morning between 6:00 and 11:00 o'clock. We don't get complaints very early morning, between midnight and 5:00 a.m. And if you break that down farther, and you get into hour of the day, you can see that between about 6:00 and 11:00, so from here till about here, generally, higher complaint volumes.
In the middle of '23?
We got the contract in place in August of 2023, and the monitors were installed, I think, on October 17th of last year. But our communications campaign started up middle of August, as soon as the contract is in place. And shout out to our communications team. They've made it very easy for people to complain and help us get great data out of this. So we've talked about the time of the day, we've talked about day of the week, season of the year, and now we're going to look at location. So we've broken the complaint data down. And this is just showing data that we've received over the last about 11 months. Majority of the complaints come from the downtown area, East Village, South MLK. And then there's a pocket down here near Easter Lake. About a dozen of these complaints actually came in on one day, and it was unrelated to the industries that we're working with right now, so. And we went through that actually at our May Council Work Session. We showed that you know, we did get a lot of complaints. Our monitors and our software and our modeling all show that it wasn't them. Right?
Tight deal. Yeah, they implied them.
So these next slides are going to just kind of, we're not going to spend a whole lot of time on them. They're just going to show that our wind instrumentation, our weather monitors, they're working as they should. So if you think about it, just kind of bigger picture, it tends to be windier in the afternoon. The data from our weather station that's on top of the MSC-2 shows that that is holding true. So this is for about 11 months of data. Winds are generally a little bit lower in the morning, a little bit higher in the afternoon. Same goes for temperature. It's hotter in the afternoons. Sunnier during the day, it's the solar radiation. Relative humidity is higher in the mornings. It drops down throughout the day and goes back up in the evening. And then this is kind of where, Mr. Manobom, this is where the, kind of the seasonal aspect of it comes in. So if you remember at our last conversation, we talked about the wind rose. Each of these charts show where the wind is coming from and how fast it's blowing for each season for the 11 months of data that we've collected. The color of each of one of these is how fast the wind was blowing, and the direction is where it's coming from, and the length is how frequently it's coming from that direction. So you can see, in the spring and in the winter, predominant winds are out of the northwest, and that's just for our 11 months of monitoring. In the summer and in the fall, there are more winds out of the southeast. Does this chart make sense?
To that?
Yeah.
I mean, so do we have any correlation between the way the wind is blowing in the complaint?
Yes.
So presumably, it's when the winds are out of the southeast, that's when we're getting the complaints. So it's maybe the reason in the winter is the wind is actually blowing the smell away from where all the folks are in the winter more.
Right. And we actually have, we have another chart that'll kind of drive that home here towards the end. I'm loving your questions. So at our last meeting, we talked very specifically about cycles of the three constituents and particulates we're keeping an eye on. And remember, this is not necessarily technically an odor monitoring program. We're keeping an eye on three compounds that are associated with odors that come from this type of industry. So the first one is H2S, it's hydrogen sulfide. We can see on most days, in the morning, hydrogen sulfide spikes across, and this is an average across all monitors for 11 months. Hydrogen sulfide is higher between 6:00 and noon, and remember, that's when the majority of our complaints came in as well. This is an average of all monitors, all days, all hours. And that holds true across the system. 6:00 to noon, they tend to be higher. If you break it down by month, instead of by day of the week, or across the whole season or the whole monitoring period, we see that we have higher concentrations of hydrogen sulfide generally in June, July, August. And those also seem to be when we have our highest complaints, if you remember. Conversely, we see that ammonia, NH3, which is the second compound we're keeping an eye on, associated with odors, NH3 seems to go up in the evening and the afternoons, usually spikes around 6:00 at night, and then it goes back down through the morning until about 11:00 in the morning. Ammonia was slightly higher, March, August, May, and then there was a spike about November of last year, because remember, this is 11 months of data. We don't have November this year yet. What's interesting is if you look at the scale on the y-axis on the left here, there's very, very little variation in the concentrations of ammonia that we're finding. So it ranges from 0.6, 0.06 to 0.07. Whereas if you're looking at the H2S, it ranges from 1.5 on the low end to 3.5, 4. And remember, these are averages, so there is a larger, larger swing. The last compound that we're keeping an eye on is volatile organic compounds, VOCs. It's a class of chemicals. There's a ton of them, but generally, they all detect the same way on our system and our instruments. We see that VOCs follow a pretty similar trend to H2S, and that they're higher in the morning, go back down in the afternoon for each day of the week. When averaged across all monitors, that holds true. We see that, just like hydrogen sulfide, the VOCs tend to be higher July, August, September, when it's warmer. And it is slightly higher concentrations earlier in the week. We have enough data now where we can do a pollution rose. That's not necessarily those neat funnels or wedges on the circle. It's more of a, kind of a blended histogram here, or I don't think that's the right word, but. This is per weekday, per season, average for all 10 monitors for the monitoring period. So our H2S shows, and remember, this is only 11 months of data. We've only got one season, one season for each of the monitors to average against, so this will probably change the longer we keep doing the project. And so now we're going to kind of review complaints. The last time we talked was back in May, and we had, I think, a dozen. We call them critical days, which are days in which we received five or more complaints. We now have 26 critical days. And that is again, since October of last year. For 2024, you can break it out and look at the number of complaints we've received per month. So like I said, there's been 26 of them. Our last conversation was right about here. And I think that our last work session was early May, which resulted in a little bit of media tension, communications push, and so I don't doubt that there were odors, but we were also encouraging people to do it in May. It was top of mind. So again, ask and you shall receive.
What occurred in August there?
Winds out of the southeast, to be honest with you. So instead of looking at each critical day, like we did last time, we averaged out the concentration of the monitors, or at each monitor for each compound across the system, and found that hydrogen sulfide, on a critical day, so this is data for days in which we received five or more complaints versus a normal day, every other day in the system, hydrogen sulfide is actually higher. And so we do think that hydrogen sulfide is one of the compounds that is causing an odor complaint, or is causing odor complaints in the city. So this is again, the pollution rose. The more red it is, the worse it is, the higher concentration there are. On normal days, we see this for pollution rose on H2S, hydrogen sulfide. And on critical days, you can see that we're getting winds more out of the southwest, southeast, south. And the concentrations are coming from, could be several different areas. Now, this is interesting, and this will probably be the last time we talk about ammonia and H3. We're finding that if we average out the ammonia concentrations on days where we receive a lot of complaints, our critical days, that the concentrations are actually slightly lower versus normal days. And so it's reasonable for us to say that we do not believe that ammonia is causing odor complaints. Here's the NH3 pollution roses. And remember, the variation in these concentrations is pretty minimal. And then the VOC, critical days, we see that there is higher concentrations of VOC, volatile organic compounds, earlier in the day. They go down, but they are higher pretty much throughout the day. And then here's the VOC pollution roses for a normal day and a critical day. So almost more so than what's going on at either of the facilities that we're working with that causes odor complaints is the wind. And that's borne out in our data here. So days that we receive more complaints, the wind is lower, so we have slower winds. This is averaged out across all 26 of the critical days. And the reason that would be is because the lower the wind, the less opportunity there is for that odor plume to kind of dissipate. So this is the chart that I was referencing earlier, Mr. Manobom. A wind rose, so remember, this shows three things. It shows the wind speed, the wind direction, and the wind frequency. Color is speed, direction is which way this thing is pointing, and length of this wedge is how frequently it's coming from that direction. On critical days, here on the left, winds are almost always out of the southeast, almost always. And they are very, very, very rarely out of the northwest. All of our other days, all of them, the wind is kind of swirling, but winds are predominantly out of the northwest. And so if you remember back to we'll get to that one in a minute here, but. Well, so if you remember back to our wind rose from the seasons, this wind rose looks much more like the wind rose for all days in the summer and in the fall. And this looks like the wind rose much more so for spring and winter. The odor complaints tend to happen when it's warmer. I don't know if this is a causational correlation, but if it's largely driven by wind, and wind is out of the southeast when it's warmer during the summer and in the fall, it could be either or. It's slightly more humid. Again, that can be attributed to the seasonal changes, like we just talked about. And it's slightly sunnier. So before we get into the statistics on, is there any questions about what we just went through?
You always do a good job in everything that you do in your job, but this is amazing. I didn't know you were a scientist.
Yeah, I can't take all credit for it. Got a very good team, so, but thank you.
You sure do.
Okay, so this chart is going to look pretty familiar to something that you saw back in May. We set up alerts in the system that would trigger when the wind was out of the southeast and when the concentrations of the particulates we're keeping an eye on were over certain thresholds. Based off the data that we have now for the critical days found in the last 11, 12 months, we're going to change those thresholds in the system to the 99.5 percentile and 99.9 percentile for hydrogen sulfide and for volatile organic compounds. And remember, we're disregarding the NH3, the ammonia, because we don't think that it causes odor complaints. So we don't want to set a threshold that we're then going to investigate if it's just going to be a waste of time. So it can kind of be a fatigue of volume. To put that in context for you, the previous alerting system for H2S had alert thresholds set at 8, 12, and 17 parts per billion. We're changing those to 23 and 32 parts per billion. So we're going to get significantly less complaints, or less alerts through the system, but they're going to be more accurate so that we know when we should investigate. The same can be said for VOCs, a much, much higher increase on those alert thresholds as well. We're going to be going from 12, 16, and 28 to 150 and 178, and then remember, we're not setting up alerts for NH3. When we set this up last time, we thought, you know, we'll have a very good idea of when we can expect odor complaints. Immediately following our work session, we put the system live, and we've got about 4,000 alerts. It's far more than me or anyone on my team can dig into with any intensity. So by decreasing the number of alerts we get, we should be able to increase the attention we give to each of them. Those alerts also go to anyone that has a login to the system. So our partners at Smithfield, our partners at Darling, and soon our partners at WRA. The majority of the other criteria used in this alert are pretty much the same. So the wind direction, out of the southeast, like we saw in that wind rose, winds out of the southeast, we're going to have odor complaints. And then it's, like I said, it's going to go to all alleged sources and to one personnel. We wanted to make sure that we weren't going to miss a bunch of our critical days by changing that alert system, and so we ran that through the software, and we found that it will actually still be accurate. So that is a good thing. This is kind of putting in writing how it is that we've been dinging into odor issues. So if we notice it on the spot, we'll reach out and work on this immediately. If we are reviewing the monthly data and we see something was going on, we'll follow a very similar process, but if we get a bunch of complaints, we'll check the reports and do the stuff in the system to find out what's going on. We'll create backward trajectories in the system to show where that odor plume was coming from, which is why it's so important that we get good complaint data, just not high volume but high quality. So we need to know time, date, location, and description of that odor. I'll check the monitoring network for concentrations of our two, now two compounds we're watching to see what was going on with each of those compounds at each of our monitors for that approximate time. The plume would have gone over or through or from that facility. And then we'll reach out to the stakeholders and see what's going on. So this is, sorry, go ahead.
So when you say you're monitoring, I mean, is someone watching a screen, or they get an alert that it bumps a threshold and somehow a text message goes out, or just, could you explain?
Yeah.
A small amount of that?
Kind of all the above. So we've got a TV mounted on the wall at the armory, has this pulled up 24 hours a day. So a lot of people stop into my office and say, wow, it's really red on Monitor 1. It sure is. We'll get automatic emails when the thresholds for the alert have been triggered. They'll go straight to me and anyone with a login for the system. And our partners in the industry, they've got TVs mounted. They get those emails as well. So.
So if it bumps over a certain number, you get an alert?
Yes.
And then what's the time between when you talk to either Darling or Smithfield contact? A few hours, a few days?
I mean, it can vary. Sometimes never. For example, two, three weeks ago, we got a ton of odor complaints associated with ag out west, somebody who spread manure. I'm not going to call up Smithfield and Darling about that, because like, there's nothing to do about it.
Sure, it's not one of the monitors that's around there.
Right, right. We still got the complaints, so we still checked the monitors, found that the winds are out of the west. The complaints were actually coming in from like Western Polk County, Eastern Dallas County. There's nothing we can do about that. So sometimes never. Sometimes we reach out to them before the complaints start coming in. Sometimes it's within five, 10 minutes. Sometimes it's within a few hours, a few days. Sometimes it's within a few hours, a few days. So if it's five complaints over 24 hours, we're probably not going to notice that in the moment, that day, but as we review our monthly data, we will. And so there's two, there's kind of two components that we investigate. One of them is the complaint side of it. And the second one is the reading, the instrument reading side of it. And so.
And some of these complaints could be from city employees that work at MSC or MSC2, correct? I mean, you've got some good noses there, reliable noses that.
Yeah, so here's the, here's the map showing complaints. That 53 number, that territory is pretty big. And that includes the MSC and the MSC2. And I've not gone through all 53, through all 53 of those complaints, but I would hazard a guess that 90% or more of those are from my coworkers, which is a good thing. As I'm getting back to my spot, we've got a few people in each of those buildings that I'll reach out to before we start receiving complaints, even if I see that the monitor readings are fairly high, like what's going on out there today? So we are as proactive as we can be on this. So we're going to dig into one example and kind of show how we investigate these things. This is from September 12th of this year. Here's all the complaints that we received for September. Received 15 on that one day. And this is a map of all complaints, time of day for all complaints. This is really drilling down into that one day, what was going on. Most of the complaints came in between 6:00 and 11:00 in the morning, which we already talked about, that's, that's pretty typical. The description of the odors, pretty consistent. And the odors all came in generally north and west of the area that we're keeping an eye on. So we checked our monitors. On monitor five, we saw that there was pretty high concentrations of H2S. This is averaged across the day. There's obviously spikes significantly higher than this across all monitors, but high concentrations of H2S across the system that day. We ran what's called a breach report. We set up these thresholds based off of the data that we had at the first work session. And we found that across all 10 of the monitors, for most of the day, we were outside of where we would like to be. And so red numbers are generally not great, means we're going to have issues, which we saw in the complaint data. We then just took one of those complaints. We mapped it out. So this is north and east of the Women's Achievement Bridge over there, not too far from the East Village. So the T minus zero right here is where the odor complaint was observed. And it was observed about 7:45. So we put this data in, we ran a backward trajectory and it spit this purple trail out. Each of these dots on the purple trail, we can click on, they're one minute increments. And we can see what was happening with each of these monitors for each of these one minute intervals for the backward trajectory. So if you just take it towards the middle-ish of this area, we can see that we did have higher concentrations at 7:11. So 34 minutes before the odor was observed, we did have higher concentrations of H2S averaged across 10 minutes in the area. And so the trajectory is working. The instruments, the monitors are working. The compound that we're watching that we think is causing odors in this situation, it appeared to cause the odor, and the wind was out of the southeast. So I am going to defer to Smithfield to talk about some of the improvements they made to their facility. But this, this chart is pretty interesting. So remember that the red is higher concentrations and the deeper red, the higher concentration it is. So Smithfield installed a device at their facility. This whole chart is showing all of the data between when the project started in the middle of October through the middle of February, when Smithfield's project went live. This is the pollution rose for H2S before. We can see that not a whole lot of readings across most monitors. Fairly high reading at monitor, I think that's five, at the corner of East 18th and Murray. Now remember, this is only one season of data that we're averaging against. And so as this goes on, these are all going to change and we're going to get more insights out of it. After Smithfield put in their device, we can see that it's not just pointing straight at their facility anymore from this pollution rose. And remember, this is from February until about the middle of September. So we only have one spring, one summer, and a little bit of fall data to average this against. But from what we can tell in the system, the efforts that they took in the middle of February last year have worked. They have been working. So if you, if we get into the raw data, just the raw values bear that out, it's kind of hard to show a ton of Excel sheets up here, but there is basically no H2S concentrations across, I wouldn't say none, but across the monitoring network prior to the middle of February, except for this. And it is kind of hard to see it on the projector. It exceeds almost our scale shown. And their device was installed right here in an area where H2S concentrations are to be expected. It's not nearly as like crimson dark red anymore, and it's not pointing immediately straight at the area where we would expect those concentrations to be found. There are concentrations elsewhere. So again, I will hazard, I'll caution you, this is one season of data. And so to really bear this out, we would need more data to say 100% it's been effective, but preliminary review shows that it has worked. And so with that, I'm going to ask for Naomi? Naomi from Smithfield's going to come kind of give an overview of what she's been doing and what their team's been doing. And then Darling, after Darling, will get up, kind of give next steps. Thank you.
Good morning, sorry. Good morning. My name's Naomi Hoffman. I'm a Director of Environmental Health and Safety with Smithfield Foods and here to chat about what we've been doing in Des Moines to participate with this program. So one of the first things that we really focus on is the EnviroSuite monitoring part of it. So we helped aid financially in the installation of the original 10 sensors and the weather station. We have also pledged to contribute to the addition of 10 more monitors and two more weather stations. We monitor the EnviroSuite daily. We have it displayed 24/7 at the plant for monitoring in our maintenance area. So it's in the face. We know if a monitor is turning red, we can go out and kind of look at our system, see what's going on. We are also on the email distribution list for monitor alerts, breach reports, and risk reports. So we get that information as quickly as Dalton and his team is getting as well. Part of the thing we did originally was to help respond in real time for the complaints. First, we're on the email distribution for the citizen complaints. We also purchased the nasal ranger, which is a field olfactory meter. We purchased this to be proactive in our monitoring and to match the original case study that was done here in Des Moines. We complete readings in real time response to notifications from the city. So we get those odor complaints as they're coming in. We kind of go around if we think they're more around our area, we'll go to our monitors and even additional monitors, all 10 of them, take real time readings, see what they are for our, on our device here. We did receive training from the world renowned olfactory specialist Pamela Dalton. We have a couple of people trained onsite for that, so we do have a backup person in case people are on vacation. Finally, the big thing that we did is we did install an RTO. We invested over $2 million in this project. The goal was for this was to reduce the VOCs by 98%. We started this up in February of 2024. And what our RTO is, it's focused on capturing the high intensity points from our rendering process. So that is up and that is functional. And as Dalton pointed out, we have seen pretty good success with it as well. And that is all I have for you guys. Thank you. Oh, sorry.
So how many people at Smithfield are receiving the alerts?
There is, well, I'm on the distribution list. The GM there at the plant is on the distribution list as well. We have a couple additional corporate people that receive the alerts to monitor. And then we have our environmental coordinator and our maintenance. So I would say there's a solid probably six to eight people that are receiving reports for it.
So you're based out of Carroll, right?
Yes, sir.
Over here then?
I'm probably over here about, yeah, at least once a month. Yep.
Okay, all right. All right, thanks.
Do you operate 24/7 or, I mean, what are your hours of operation?
Sure, so the plant is manned and going 24/7. However, the harvest does not go 24/7 and the operation of rendering does not go 24/7. So our rendering process typically starts up about 10:30 or 11:00 in the morning. It goes till about 2:00 or 3:00ish. Then there's a slight break and then it starts back up at 6:00 and it goes till about 9:00 or 10:00 at evening. So there's two different shifts for the rendering process.
I was just curious because it looked like Monday was the spike day. So I was just curious why that could happen.
We're not sure on that correlation.
Yeah, I mean, unless I read it wrong, but okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Hey, good morning, everyone. My name's Billy Holmes. I'm Director of Environmental Affairs for Darling. I support the Des Moines facility here out of Texas. I'm from Irving, Texas, at our global headquarters. Today, I'm going to talk a little bit about, more about the odor control efforts that we've implemented at the site and our methodologies, as well as a, an ongoing construction project that we're in the middle of and we expect to have online later this month or in November later this year. So first, I'm going to start talking about our current control technologies that we've implemented. We've been using wet scrubber technology for a couple of decades here in Des Moines. We, we separate out how we control our odors into two different ideologies. We've got our high intensity side of things and we have our room air that we control. So on the high intensity side of things, we use a Venturi scrubber. And that's our, that's kind of our workhorse that knocks out the particulate of the aerosolized fats, things like that, at our point source capture on our various piece of operating equipment, including our non-condensable vapors that come off of the rendering process. Post Venturi, we have two pack bed scrubbers that use oxidation chemistry. We just transferred over from a chlorine dioxide chemistry into a new, what's called Radox technology, which allows us to control pH and, and oxidize chemistries on a wide, on a wide spectrum. We'll get into a little bit more about that here in a minute. But additionally, we have the root, what we call the room air scrubber. And that's what's controlling the atmosphere in the building. Any fugitive vapors that are found in the building are going to be controlled through that pack bed scrubber at 100,000 cubic feet per minute with oxidation chemistry as well. So as I mentioned, we just rolled over into this new chemistry program. It allows us to target H2S compounds and NH3 compounds, the hydrogen sulfide and the ammonia that Dalton was speaking to, as well as VOCs by the addition of that pH control in the, in the water that's being recirculated through that, through that scrubber. So as that vapor stream goes through that scrubber unit, we're pulling out those compounds, H2S, NH3, and VOC, oxidizing them. And then anything else is going into our wastewater treatment system. It all gets into solution. Post the Venturi and the two pack bed scrubbers on the high intensity side, we also use a regenerative thermal oxidizer. We commissioned that in 2015. So we have two heating chambers in there and they alternate back and forth, heating up this media inside those beds to greater than 1,200 degrees before being discharged into atmosphere. And, and that is how we treat our high intensity vapors there. I wanted to pull up on the site or on the presentation to just show you from a, from a glance, if you're driving by the site, what those stacks are. The room air scrubber stack, that's the larger stack there. That's what I said, it's discharging at about 100,000 cubic feet per minute, just controlling the ambient environment inside the, inside the building. And then the smaller stack there, it's a little hard to see, it's that stainless stack, that's our regenerative thermal oxidizer stack. And that's where our high intensities are being discharged from. On top of the control technology we implemented, our team, our local team, they're also very proactive in best management practices to eliminate any additional odors that may present themselves. So a preventative maintenance program on all the equipment that I just spoke to. We are diligent in our housekeeping. We have, and we have had for a long time, an internal odor investigation policy where anytime we receive an odor complaint, our local team is going out. If they know the location, they're going to go visit the location. They're going to try and do this in real time, verify our equipment and the plant is running appropriately, make sure there's no upsets inside the, inside the process. And then they'll report back that back into corporate and we'll, we'll investigate further to see, is there something we can do above and beyond what we already have to, to improve things there? Additionally, just with raw material handling, we do what's first in and called first in and first out. So the first trailers that arrive are going to be the first ones that are going to be processed because that H2S and ammonia is associated with the breakdown of organic material. And so we are incentivized not only from an odor standpoint to get that material into the process as quickly as possible, but just from a business standpoint. And then on top of that, our, our local team, we've got telemetry currently, a limited amount, but we can, we can monitor how our pollution control technology is working by monitoring the pH of the sump, the recirculation flow rate of those, of those units and the pressure differential across those units, as well as the process temperature in the cooking, which is how we render. So as I mentioned, we're in the middle of a modernization project. We're investing an additional 1.1 million or around there in modernizing the equipment. The first part of that was to implement the new chemical program, which I mentioned was Radox. So that's been online. And now we have just set our two news, or our three new scrubbing units that include a Venturi and the two wet pack bed scrubbers. We already have these in place. We're just modernizing them into a, a better piece of equipment, more modern piece of technology that allows us to add more telemetry, that allows us to monitor our, our equipment in real time. Additionally, that telemetry is going to be tied into an HMI system that'll allow us to trend data and we'll be able to compare that next to the EnviroSuite data that we receive as we are a member of that program as well. And then the final thing we're going to do is we're going to add some additional room air pickups to collect just some, some, some strategic points on the building to maybe get that air into the scrubbers a little more quickly. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Just a moment. So how many Darling employees are seeing the Enviro?
The EnviroSuite alerts? Yep. So we've got our plant manager, our general manager, our regional vice president, myself. Is there anyone I'm missing over there, guys? Or our assistant general manager as well?
And let's see, didn't we approve an expansion or a zoning change for your plant? Is that part of what? Pardon? No? Well, Dalton, didn't you mention something about an addition to the plant that?
No. No. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. I'm sorry, my confusion.
No, no problem, no problem at all.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that there's been any big additions or anything, but I've only been here two years, so. All right. Right, I think that's it, yeah. Yep. So we, we, I can't stress this enough, there's two. If you remember nothing else, we do, we do view both Smithfield and Darling as key stakeholders in this, and they want to improve odor conditions just as much as we do and our citizens do. They are getting sick of me calling them, great staff. They are getting sick of me. So polite, working relationship, but I'm, I'm getting pretty annoying. The second thing is that aside from our partners here with Smithfield and Darling, we do have the Polk County Air Quality Team. They have logins to this. So Des Moines is looking at this from a quality of life standpoint. This is not a public health issue. This is not a public health issue. Polk County Air Quality permits for health issues. Last I spoke with them, they are in compliance with all their permits. So this isn't something that's going to make you sick. This just stinks, it's not pleasant. So that is what Neighborhood Services does across all of our programs. We are here for quality of life. So for our next steps, we are going to continue to gather data. About a month ago, you guys approved the change order to our contract with Envira Suite to install 10 more monitors and three more weather stations. Five of those monitors are going to be installed down at the DEVR. Five of those are going to be installed through the community, primarily where we receive a lot of complaints. So if you remember that complaint map, it's going to be East Village, Dean Avenue, by the Science Center and Riverwoods Elementary. So we've been working with the Des Moines Public Schools. They actually have facilities that are perfect for this and they've been great to work with. We're installing our three weather stations. One of them's going to go down at the county soccer park. One of them is going kind of by the North High School football stadium. And the third one is going off of Dean as well. And so between those three additional weather stations and the five monitors in the community, we're going to be able to improve our trajectories and modeling so that our trajectories don't zigzag across the city and we have a very, very good idea of where the plumes are coming from. Those thresholds and the data we gathered through our instruments are going to be used to refine the alert thresholds that we set in the system. And then we're going to keep working with our industry stakeholders like we have been. So Darling's program should be finished or their project should be wrapped up here in the next few months. Very interested to see what impact that has on the readings we're getting on our monitors. So.
Back to our partners on this are, is Des Moines the only location that's doing Envira Suite monitoring? Like at other Darling plants or other Smithfield plants, are they doing anything similar to this?
So I can answer to the municipal side of things and I can say that the city of Des Moines is very unique in this regard. There isn't another city, for the most part, in the country that is doing what we're doing to try to get a handle on odor. The Minnesota Department, State of Minnesota Department of Management did a study about six months ago to see what municipalities across the country are doing. Many of the systems and programs that are in place look like what we had up until about a year ago, where it was complaint based, map it out and then go talk to people. We're using data to really firm this up. So it is, it is pretty interesting what we're doing. We're very unique in that regard. Envira Suites customers are typically not cities, states, counties. Their customers are usually landfills, quarries, mines. And so we're also unique in that regard. I don't know, do you guys have Envira Suites for other facilities?
So we engage with Envira Suite, but it's less time out of odors.
Okay, thank you. Really, on behalf of Des Moines, thank you to Smithfield and Darling for the work you're doing to help us create a better quality of life for our residents. So thanks again for your investment. Thank you, Dalton, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Didn't know that odors took so much scientific aspect. So move on, Scott.
Yes, Mayor, our second topic, I'll have Steve come on up, is Locust and Grand conversion in the downtown area and its delay. We continue to get a lot of questions about this project and we had not had the opportunity to have this setting conclude with what the recommendations are for the roadway changes. However, you'll see the slides that come forward indicate the expense of this project. And so I will take a moment in the middle of the presentation to talk about budgets as well. So first, Steve will talk about all the different options that were reviewed.
All right. All right. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council. My name is Steve Naber, Des Moines City Engineer and Des Moines resident. I've got with me, where was he? Move to the front row. Corey Boganree, Principal Traffic Engineer, who's going to help me with the presentation. I've also got other team members, John Davis, Tom Block and Molly Long from our team here as well. So again, as Scott mentioned, this is kind of, you know, this is the time to present the conclusion of the study and get direction to move forward here, so. So I'll cover some of the background and public stakeholder feedback. And Corey will kind of go through the data from the study, the results from the study, and I'll talk about recommended alternatives. And then, as mentioned, Scott would like to talk budget in relation to this work, so. The background on this, you know, Connect Downtown is our transportation master plan for downtown. It's an element of Move DSM. It was adopted in 2018. It is a high level plan. And so one of the recommendations of the plan was to look at converting a number of the one-way streets downtown to two-way. And we have done some of those conversions. Fifth Avenue was the most recent, the three middle blocks of Fifth Avenue, where it was kind of two-way north and south of the downtown. And then right in downtown, it was one-way. So that's been recently converted. We wanted to look at Grand and Locust at a more, at a closer level to look at safety impacts, you know, how we can achieve getting an east-west bicycle corridor. We want to look at if we made it two-way, where would auxiliary turn lanes be needed with the conversion? And we wanted to look at things such as parking impacts. If we add turn lanes, how many spaces would be lost? And then how they would impact turning movements for larger vehicles such as emergency responders. So again, it's actually looking at this at a more closer level and having a consultant look at these intersections and what are the impacts. The focus of the study is really between Fifth Avenue and 15th Street. Those are our kind of main spines through down, north-south spines through downtown. Fifth Avenue obviously eventually connects up I-235. And then we have a plan to connect to Sixth Avenue with the work that's been done there. And 15th Street, obviously a north-south connection that goes up through the west side of downtown. To say there's been a lot of engagement would probably be an understatement. We've done a number of things here. Input ID was a website that was hosted for a handful of months that collected thousands of comments and reactions. We had a project webpage, social media interaction, multiple public open houses. We've had a number of stakeholder meetings, you can see there on the right. And so lots of public engagement done on this to gather feedback from the different stakeholders, you know, that would be impacted by improvements to downtown. This is kind of a summary of the results of that, you know, from, you know, again, from public open houses to in-person polling to input ID. And again, the consensus, you look at some of this, you know, for the in-person polling, for example, there were 47% were in favor of two-way conversion. And you can see it's kind of mixed. It looks like on Grand, folks, 63% wanted two-way on Grand, but then only 45% wanted two-way on Locust. So the bottom line is from the public stakeholder engagement, it's about a split. You know, you can argue 60, 40, 50, 50, but there's a split view on whether this should be two-way or one-way. So some of the comments that we received here, you know, kind of some of the specific feedback, we talked about in favor, the benefits of two-way conversion would allow some more flexibility for DART to improve their operations. If you notice right now, there are routes that where you would get off on, say, Grand Avenue, but then you'd have to get back on Locust. And so that would allow some flexibility there. Some residents in downtown talked about the challenges of the one-way streets when, when, say, an event closes, let's say Locust Street, well, that's essentially shutting down the network. So two-way would provide some flexibility with that, that effort. We had a number, we have some business owners that had businesses along the corridor that talked about the benefits of two-way would be that no matter which direction you come from, you can get to my business. So, and so in terms of circulation, it was being a benefit of two-way. Stakeholder feedback in opposition to two-way conversion. There was, we mapped out where the accesses to the parking garages were, but there still was concerns from stakeholders that congestion from the conversion would impact the parking garage access points. The one private garage that was along the corridor, when we met with that stakeholder, they, we think we could have made some, you know, actual physical improvements to the garage to make it work. So that wasn't necessarily an issue with them. But there were stakeholder comments about the concerns for impacts to the access on the side streets of Grand particularly. There was also concerns brought forth about DART and delivery trucks blocking traffic. For example, if you go down Locust Street, at some points during the day, you'll see that there are, delivery trucks will use one of the lanes and then so there's still a lane open. And then we just, you know, stakeholders voiced concerns that they felt that if we converted the Grand and Locust to two-way traffic, that that, in their words, was creating an additional barrier to come downtown if congestion has increased and on-street parking is lost. And then there were also concerns about, some stakeholders issued concerns about their operations and how they operate along Grand and Locust as well.
Steve, would it be fair to say that some people just don't like change?
That's often the case too, yes. Yeah. All right, Corey, I'm going to turn over you to talk some of the more, the data and results of the study, so.
Good morning. Corey Boganree, Principal Traffic Engineer with the City of Des Moines. I'm going to talk a little bit about the findings and then kind of go through the alternatives that we looked at. When we, we looked at the crash data, one thing that jumped out is vulnerable road users or PEDs and bicyclists. Those crashes were overrepresented in the stretch of both Grand and Locust between Fifth and Eighth. So about 55% of those crashes involving a pedestrian or bicyclist occurred on the 25 blocks between Fifth and Eighth, with just kind of pointed to the need to address some safety concerns there. When we looked at speeds along the corridor, we had a lot of anecdotal feedback about speeding, particularly side-by-side racing or scooping the loop. When we actually collected the speed data, we didn't see, you know, that really high speeds on these corridors. The average speeds along all the places we looked at were actually 25 miles per hour or less, a little higher speeds further west on the corridors. When we looked at the two-way conversion, when we look at intersection conflict points or the opportunity for crashes to occur, two-way conversion actually increases those opportunities for crashes because you're introducing those left turn movements that weren't previously there. One thing that has helped along this quarter that was implemented this summer is the downtown Police Summer Squad. And, you know, they've increased enforcement and there has been an noticeable drop in some of those traffic-related nuisance behaviors.
Corey, what month did you gather this speed data?
The speed data was collected in May.
So that's before the summer scooping the loop.
Yeah, and it was actually, that data was collected because this study was happening when MLK was under construction. And so in order to get, we didn't want, you know, those lanes reduced to impact the traffic data that we were collecting on Grand and Locust. And so we collected the speed and volume data before that project started. So it was actually, you know, a year before the Summer Squad started.
Okay, but the speeding data was not collected during the summer, which is when most of the complaints about speeding happened.
Yes. When we look at parking, on-street parking, it was always, you know, a concern for folks, especially those first-floor businesses want that parking near their business. When we look at the, both streets, the parking utilization ranged from 35 to 50%. So what that means is if there's 10 spaces on a block, on average, three to five of those spaces are occupied. So this suggests that some on-street parking can be removed. Now, that's just an average, some blocks, you know, by the Sculpture Park, for example, on Locust Street, that's parked full. And there's some blocks, maybe on Grand, that there's nobody parked there. So, but the data that was collected suggested that there are some, that there's an abundance of parking on the corridor. As Steve alluded to, we need to maintain some of those loading zones and kind of look to be strategic about where those are placed so people aren't loading and parking in the actual lane and they're actually using the loading zones. When we look at traffic operations, a two-way conversion is viable. There would be some increased congestion during peak hours, but we're not looking at gridlock. You know, any of these alternatives that I'll show you on the next slide will work. For, the two-way conversion though does require some turn lanes. So, you know, there's only a finite amount of space in the right-of-way that we can use. And some of that space, if we were to go to two-way on Grand, would need a turn lane pretty much the entire stretch. And then at some locations on Locust Street. And then, as Steve alluded to, some of the turning movements for these larger vehicles are a little bit difficult on the two-way conversion. So we'd have to modify some of the intersections by moving the stop bars back to accommodate those vehicles turning. So a lot of information on these next two slides, but I'm going to go through the alternatives that we look at. We looked at essentially five alternatives. We always look at a no-build alternative, so we have that baseline and that's what's shown there on the left. Alternative one was two-way on both Grand and Locust. So on Grand Avenue, which is that figure on the top, you'd have one lane of traffic in either direction in that center-left turn lane. And so what that center-left turn lane does is it requires the parking to be removed on one side of the street. So you'd have parking on one side and then a buffered bike lane. So you'd have a striped buffer between the travel lanes and then a five-foot bike lane. Locust Street would be two-way with parking on both sides. Alternative two is kind of a hybrid. So we looked at keeping Locust Street one-way while Grand goes to two-way. So Grand would have, instead of that center turn lane, would have two westbound lanes, one eastbound lane. And again, you'd have to remove parking on one side of the street. And then you can introduce that buffered bike lane. And so this cross-section is similar to what's there on Grand between Second and Fifth currently. And then in this alternative, Locust Street would remain one-way with two lanes eastbound. Alternative three, again, both streets would be two-way. So Grand would have one lane of traffic in either direction with that center turn lane. But instead of having the buffered bike lane, we're proposing a median separated cycle track. So on one side of the street, you'd have a two-way bike facility that's separated by a curb. And so that provides that protection and separation for cyclists from the travel lanes. And we propose the cycle track because it's wide enough to actually get a plow and a street sweeper through there so we could maintain that lane.
So where would you put the snow at then as you file through there?
It'd be the same. You'd have the median, I believe, would, is six feet wide. And then you'd have the winrow, you know, as they normally would along the curb.
So that wouldn't be hired out like we've done other bike lanes?
We haven't got, we hadn't gotten into that detail, but I mean, potentially, yes.
Oh, it could be.
It could be. It could be, but we didn't, you know, that was discussed with Public Works on how they could maintain this facility, but it wasn't discussed on, you know, whether they'd have to hire it out or not.
Thank you. Thank you.
That could be cleared with.
Correct. Yep. Correct. Yep. Mm-hmm. Or both. Correct. Yep. Um, sure. Yeah, depending on how much we get. Um, so alternative, exactly. Yep. Um, alternative four, uh, looked at both maintaining one-way, um, traffic on both streets. The difference here is on Grand Avenue, um, just based on traffic volumes, there's three lanes currently westbound. The, the traffic today and in the future indicates we don't need those three lanes. You could actually get by with two lanes. And so you could remove one of those travel lanes and that would allow us, again, to have that median separated two-way cycle track. Alternative four would also allow for parking on Grand to be maintained on both sides of the street. Um, Locust Street would remain one-way with parking on both sides of the street. Uh, there would be intersection improvements with all of these, um, alternatives, including, um, curb extensions or bump out. Um, so I'm going to walk through how we compared these alternatives. And we have different criteria. When we look at safety, um, there isn't a lot of data that says if you have a one-way street and you convert it to two-way, this is how many crashes you're expecting to be reduced or increased. There just isn't that, that national data there. And so you kind of have to use a surrogate. And the surrogate we're using here is conflict points in the intersection. So, um, just in general, the more conflict points, the more opportunities for crashes. Um, and with the two-way alternatives, we see an increase in, in conflict points.
So thi- this was one of the things that, that just sort of stuck out to me, because we kind of have established safety criteria in a number of places. I mean, the big piece of connect downtown, the idea was the slow speed and the id- I mean, it's the, the data with, you know, the severity of a crash when you go from a crash at 40 miles to 35 to 25 to 20. Uh, and, and that is, I, I think what the benefit of a project like this was first identified as, and that wasn't evaluated part of, right?
Um, I mean, the speeds were evaluated and, and we saw the speed. So, you know, if, if we're seeing 45 mile an hour speeds and if you go to two-way, you can reduce those to, to 25, then, then yes, you're seeing the safety benefit. But if the average speed's already 19 miles an hour, a two-way conversion, you're not going to lower those speeds much, right?
Right. I mean, I think it was depending on which stretch you looked at. I mean, in the, I mean, you had people going close to 30 in, in a chunk of this. So, uh, that would certainly be lowered by a two-way conversion, right?
Sure.
Um, I mean, the, the whole point is to make the average driver the, control the speed rather than the other stuff.
Okay. Time to where you could really?
Yeah, they're, they're current, the, most of the downtown, the traffic signals are pre-timed, meaning, um, you know, they're just on a, on a cycle. And we do that because we want the pedestrian indications to come up every single time. Um, we want it to be walkable. And then we also, it helps control the speed. So Grand and Locust, I think the, the progression speed, if you're at, say, Third and Grand and you're going west, the progression speed for the lights, if you go about 20 miles an hour, you're going to hit the greens and get all the way through downtown.
At 20 miles?
At 20 miles an hour is what the speeds are set up. Yeah.
That's if it's one-way. If it's two-way, you're going to have more stops.
Potentially, yes. Yeah. And that was another thing of looking at it. Yeah, you would likely have more stops.
There's no potential that you will with much more stops.
So is, uh, stopping bad?
But we're already controlling, I think, the stop and the speed with the, with the, with the, with the current lights, right? Isn't that what, what was said?
Um, continuing on with the, the criteria, we also looked at the pedestrian improvements and, um, whether the alternative had bump outs and what was that crossing distance. Um, we get lots of questions about bump outs and, and really all they are is a, is an extension of the sidewalk into the parking lane and it reduces the, the width of the street. And so this is a, a federal highway recommended traffic calming measure. Um, and so what are some of the benefits? You know, for pedestrians, it reduces the time they're in the street. Um, the figures there on the bottom right, uh, is the intersection of Sixth and Mulberry, which we installed some bump outs. And so if you were crossing on the east leg of the intersection, previously you were out in the street, it, for 58 feet. So that's where your exposure, where you're out in the street. Uh, we installed the bump outs and that was reduced to 42 feet. So al- almost reduced by two travel lanes. And, um, so it just reduces that amount of time that somebody's out in the street. The other thing it does is it improves, um, the ability for pedestrians and motorists to see each other. Um, if there's a car parked there, you know, along the parking lane, um, a lot of times if you're standing back, um, behind the car and motorists can't see the pedestrians, this brings the pedestrians, you know, behind the curb but out closer to where the motorists can see them. Um, and again, it reduces that time that pedestrians are out in the street. Some of the other benefits is it slows vehicle turning speeds. So vehicles can't cut the corner and, you know, make that turn at 20 miles an hour. It requires everyone who's making that turn to actually slow down, um, and turn. It also prevents motorists from parking so close to the corner, which again, blocks those sightlines. And it defines the lanes. Um, it defines, you know, if no one's parked there and you have a bump out, motorists can't just drive down the parking lane, where if no one's parked in that parking lane, it looks just like a drive lane. Um, and, and one other thing I just want to point out is that these are used all over the US and even all over Iowa. So it's not, curb extensions are not unique to the City of Des Moines. Um, some other criteria that we looked at, we looked at, um, you know, at the alternative had a bicycle facility. What was that facility type? How are we separating those cyclists, um, from the travel lanes? Looked at traffic operations. Uh, we look at a level of service scale, which is kind of an, an A to F scale. Um, in a downtown environment, level of service D during the peak hour. It, you know, if you get that on your math test, that's bad, but, um, you know, for, for traffic operations, level of service D during the peak hour is acceptable. Um, it's expected to have a little bit of congestion there in those peak hours. Uh, we looked at, uh, how the alternative impacted on-street parking and loading zones. Uh, how did, um, the alternative impact emergency vehicles and response time? How's the difficulty for large turning vehicles? Um, what are the impacts to transit? As Steve mentioned, uh, the two-way conversion does provide that route flexibility for DART. We looked at construction costs as well as traffic volumes.
So just to, uh, pause a little bit on DART. So the, uh, D-line is, is scheduled to go away, is that?
Yes.
Okay, so the argument that, well, I'd have to stop for, uh, buses, um, with the D-line going away, some of that, uh, goes away also, doesn't it?
Yeah, there are still a few routes that do use Grand and Locust.
Yeah, they still use the same roads.
Right. But, but at least the D-line is going to.
Sure.
Okay. And so, um, how often do fire trucks and other emergency vehicles drive on Grand and Locust? Don't they like, aren't they going to Mercy or going, you know, north-south, going to, uh, uh, emergency rooms?
Um, I mean, it depends on which vehicles you're talking about. Uh, from Fire Station One, that's over on Mulberry.
Sure.
They, you know, pretty much, unless they're going, um, to the south, I think they're almost exclusively using Locust and Grand. So, um, th- they are using Locust and Grand quite a bit. And we've worked with them on some other projects, our other projects that we've been, uh, like 12th Street, for example, uh, we worked with the Fire Department, um, on some of those, uh, curb extensions, uh, for their, um, the routes that they take. Um, so this is just, again, taking those alternatives and comparing them. Um, and on the left, you'll see all those criteria that I just mentioned. Um, now we color coordinated this to, uh, green is good, yellow, you know, in the middle, red, bad. Now, um, you, you could argue the colors, you could just take the colors completely away, uh, but the underlying data is still the same. Um, and so, you know, when we look at, um, all the different alternatives, you know, each column represents all those alternatives. And so, um, you know, uh, again, we talk about increasing conflict points, those two-way alternatives increase the conflict points. Um, they also, no, but they still do shorten that crossing distance compared to the status quo. Uh, when we look at bicycle facilities, the, the, the two-way cycle track provides that separation. So we're saying that that's, you know, a better alternative than having, um, no bike facility, which is essentially what the no-build has, or the buffered bike lanes. We look at traffic operations, they're pretty much even across the board. Uh, as I mentioned, the, the two-way conversion, the traffic will work just fine. Um, we look at on-street parking, um, the two-way alternatives, because you have to remove parking on one side of the street, there is reduction in parking. Now, there is some leeway for that reduction. There's, um, there's an abundance of parking, but, uh, you know, alternative three, for example, um, which would be two-way on both streets, you'd see a, a reduction of about a third of the on-street parking spaces. Um, and then as we, we go down the line, you know, I'll just point out the construction costs. So the, the two-way conversion, um, because you're introducing that new direction of travel, we have to, uh, look at every single traffic signal along the corridor and that increased the cost. Um, so with that, I will turn it back over to Steve to, uh, wrap it up and talk about our recommendation.
All right. Thanks, Corey. Um, so when we look at, uh, downtown Des Moines, it's, it's, it's not unlike, uh, other compact mixed-use downtowns in our country. Uh, you can go to any city and see, uh, similar downtowns where, again, we only have 350-foot blocks. A- a- and so when you look at that, uh, you know, one-ways do help provide the flow of traffic in compact downtown blocks. A- a- and it, the old me- the old mentality, uh, I would say, in, in traffic engineering decades ago was how do we move high volumes of traffic at high speeds? How do we get people from point A to B efficiently and quickly? And, and I think that's, uh, that mentality has, has definitely, uh, not helped, uh, from a, a safety and crash standpoint at all. Uh, but I think we can look at things as how do we move high volumes of traffic at slow speeds? And, and, and there isn't any, uh, as Corey mentioned, data that will show you that going from one-way to two-way, if that's the only thing we're doing, that that will make things safer or slow tr- traffic down. There's plenty of examples over the, you know, over the past decades where, where cities have taken streets like what we have and made them safer without going to two-way. And just to name a few, uh, the, the National Association of City Transportation officials, they talk about First Avenue in New York, which is, uh, a, a famous street on the east side of New York and Manhattan, where there's a wide one-way street, multiple lanes, that was once designed for the peak hour, uh, in, in only the peak hours. And then when you go out there at 10, 10 AM, we got too many lanes and we got people making NASCAR drivers jealous with jockeying maneuvers. And, uh, and they took it and took out the excess lanes a- and put in a two-way cycle track. Uh, N Street in, in Lincoln, Nebraska is one where they took a little one-way street and, and tightened it up. A- and so, so the issue with speeding and, and, and crashes is not just whether it's one-way or two-way, it's also the context of the street. And, and, and if we have wide streets with excess lanes, that's a problem. And so, so, so our recommendation, my recommendation is to, uh, is to look at alternative four, uh, to right-size and reduce Grand from three lanes to two lanes. Uh, that does a number of things. One, it shortens the pedestrian crossing distances, it tightens up the corridor. Corey talked about how the bump outs and tightening up the corridor not just shortens the pedestrian crossing distances, but it makes pedestrians visible, right? And, and so those are, those are one of the most vulnerable users on our streets. Uh, it adds a two-way protected cycle track on Grand Avenue. And I know, I know we have a handful of cycle tracks in Des Moines, uh, but essentially, in my opinion, a two-way cycle track, we have sh- separate shared-use paths that function similar. And so this gets a protected bike facility, uh, and, and fills a gap in that network. Uh, alternative four maintains most of the on-street parking. Uh, I know that, yes, we said that, uh, in, in our minds, we look at parking usage, we can lose parking. I don't feel the stakeholders felt the same. Uh, and so, uh, and I know that part, I'm not going to argue, yes, on-street parking is, is valuable and those spaces are valuable. And, and so alternative four does not i- impact those, uh, you know, in, impact those. We can make the two-way conversion work. I- i- it can work operationally. We can make it work, uh, with, but there's just a number of cons to it, uh, a- and, and the impacts to large turning vehicles. We can make the two-way work. We would lose parking spaces. We might have to move stop bars back, uh, and, and increase the size of how we design the intersections or changes how we design the intersections, uh, but we can make it work. How we look at it, the stakeholder feedback, the public's 50/50, uh, on whether we go two-way or not. And so when I, when we look at the matrix, when we add it all up, uh, I, I just don't see the benefits of the, of going to two-way outweigh the one-way. And so when I say, when I look at a project, I say, well, what are we trying to solve here? And, and if we're trying to solve safety, which is the number one aspect, alternative four does that. Alternative four tightens up the corridor. Alternative four provides those mo- you know, avenues for those modes that don't currently have bicycles and pedestrians making it safer. It accomplishes the things that I think that we want to accomplish with this. I think there are too many risks with going to two-way. Uh, yes, we had stakeholders say, voice both, you know, circulation coming from both directions. But from a traffic modeling standpoint, again, this is projec- this is, there's no exact science to this, but if we convert both streets to two-way, we do believe that there would be a reduction in traffic volumes on Locust Street. I don't see that being a good thing for, for restaurants on Locust Street. A- a- and if you're coming down Grand Avenue and, and they're both two-way, you may not have a reason to go down to Locust Street, jog down a block just to jog back north. You would make Grand a continuous, you would be kind of the continuous route. And so, uh, and then when we look at the costs, again, that's five million versus nine million, uh, in terms of costs. Again, this is just another factor in it. Again, this is what I would do. I would, I would go with alternative four. That's my recommendation, I believe, what achieves the, the problems we're trying to solve here. So.
Just a quick question, and I brought the maintenance, the long-term maintenance of the, of the cycle track, which I think it's the, definitely the safest way and I'm, I'm fully supported. But we've got to have assurance that, that Public Works will be plowing this and not, not out for a third party like what we do for Ingersoll. With the budget situation that we're in and long-term maintenance for some of these facilities, you know, w- w- we've got to, we've got to have assurance from them that they will be plowing.
Do you want to tie in?
Oh, and I did want to, and I don't know if Scott, you know, that, so that's my recommendation, but I know the city manager want to talk. We're in kind of the middle of, obviously the heart of planning for budgets. And so Scott, you want to kind of talk to this?
Yeah. Yeah. Clarifying's fine. Let's do that.
Yeah.
Let's do that.
Uh, on maybe the last slide you had, I'm, I'm just adding up, um, I'm adding up the lanes and how wide you said the track was and the, and the, uh, buffer strip.
Mm-hmm.
So do, do each of the travel lanes and parking lanes get thinner?
The, the trial, Corey, do you remember we had, was it 10 to 11-foot lanes? Is that kind of what they are today? Is that?
I don't think they can be what they are today and have that much space on the right side.
Yeah, I believe today, um, they're about 12 feet. And so we're reducing down to 11 feet travel lanes.
But there's like five lanes, how many lanes?
Yeah, the, the, the big ladder truck is fine with the 11-foot.
The other thing, um, on Grand is that. The other thing on Grand is that there is a westbound bike lane. And so, you know, that's another six feet in there. We, the, all of these alternatives are taking where the existing curbs are and it's not proposing to remove them. So everything you see up there fits within the existing curb lines.
Mayor, may I make a couple of comments? I'll go through this quickly. Just as a side note, I was in New York recently and observed that their crosswalk light turned on about two seconds before the traffic light turned on green. And it was brilliant because it gave two seconds for pedestrians to get out into the street before cars started moving and the cars actually stopped. So just, just a comment.
Cars stop for pedestrians?
Yeah, believe it or not, because they're in front of the car.
If they do in New York, it's pretty amazing.
I have a quick comment regarding bike lanes. I am so frustrated with the multiple options of bike lanes in the city of Des Moines. In one block, it's a bike lane on each side. In another block, it's a bike lane on one side only. In another block, it's two going side by side. On Ingersoll, it's a dedicated lane up on the sidewalk. I just find it very confusing. And I would not support a raised median going down to separate the bike lane. I, I think the, is this, you told me, I think that the snow removal increased in the first phase of Ingersoll by $44,000 annual.
To the third party?
Because of the intricacies. So anyway, I just, I'm bothered by another concrete median going down the street. Capital cost, certainly staying with one-way is a reduction in capital cost, but I share Gatto's comment about operational cost. I always want to see both capital cost and annual operating cost for all capital projects so that we know what we're getting into. I appreciate going the one-way because to me it makes it easier for the buses and the delivery vehicle. We have options to go away. It also helps emergency. My last comment is, and when we talked about this, I think when Jim Hoff called me and told me, one of my comments is, why would we do this before we see the DART study to end all study? We assume that buses will be on both Grand and Locust, but do we really know that? And do we want to do this work on the heels of a DART study coming in a year, year and a half? Or do we want to wait for the DARTs? Those are my comments.
Okay. Anyone else, Carl?
Yes, so does that mean that Grand Avenue is going to be two-way, uh, two-way traffic from, let's see, Central Capes to, what, 17th or 15th? Then you propose it to be one-way and then it's going to pick up to be two-way again, starting at 5th? So that's, to me, that sounds like we couldn't decide, so we'll have a little bit of both.
Well, yeah, I mean, that, Councilman, that's a question. I mean, there, there's different contexts, you know, there. I mean, we're going through the heart of downtown and I don't think it's uncommon to have.
So, but, but if, if you're coming downtown from Clive and I'm like, okay, is this a two-way street or is it a one-way street? And so it, it just, it, it's like a decision by committee that we couldn't decide, so we'll do a little bit of both. And, yeah, I have a challenge with that. No, that's all right, go ahead.
I, I, I wanted to make a, a couple of comments. And to me, I, I struggle with this kind of based on what is missing from this analysis. You know, I was a little disappointed because I, I thought, and I don't know how the alternatives were picked, but, but in talking with stakeholders, there were a number of stakeholders who wanted to see a combination of alternative two and three that, that was not studied. The two-way westbound with two-way and turn lanes on Locust. But the other pieces, like I said, that weren't included, I, I asked that question of Cory on the safety piece, which our policy, we didn't study the safety piece based on our policy or that wasn't incorporated here. There was this new, there was this new criteria, which was the conflict point, which I haven't seen us use in, in any other instance. And then the other piece that is missing is the economic development piece, which was a big part of the initial discussion of neck downtown and the conversion from one-way to two-way. And that is part of, if you talk to some of the stakeholders, some of the most adamant folks wanting the, the two-way conversion, where some of those businesses on, on Locust Street, because they believe from looking at other places that that two-way there is important to the vitality of, of, of the area. So those things were kind of missing from, from my perspective. I think Councilmember Simonson makes a good point about how we incorporate DART and that, that maybe that's another piece that you would want before you make any decisions like this or any investments. So there are pieces that, that I think are kind of incomplete in this study piece for me to be able to feel comfortable with, with any decision.
Oh, and so Steve, I was in the meeting when the restaurant owners on Locust Street said that two-way is the best way for exposure for their restaurant. So I think we're just ignoring that, but that's, you know, those are stakeholders that are trying to hold on to their businesses in this corridor, so. I, I guess we're going to just.
Okay, I think, first of all, I think they've done a lot of studying. The economic impact, I think, is, could be hard to evaluate. If I was leaving downtown, I would be out Grand Avenue. I would come down Grand, I'd go out Grand. I think doing a conversion, in my personal opinion, on Locust would be a detriment to them. But that's neither here nor there. I think the biggest issue we need to look at is what we're going to talk about is more the budget impact and how do we create, you know, some newness, but also not spend as much money.
Thank you, Mayor. If I, there's one point out that Councilmember Simonson has pointed out. We, we are using actual leading pedestrian intervals and signals in certain locations where you give the pedestrians a couple of seconds, like Cory mentioned, Sixth Avenue. So we are using that. And I would echo the mayor's comments. The economics is, I, I would, I would find it hard to believe that First Avenue is not a success from an economical in New York. I would find it hard to believe that N Street in downtown Lincoln is not. So it's not, there's not a way to say that going to two-way will give you more or not and it'll give you a better or less response in terms of an economics. That's why it's not in there, so.
So anything the Cornhuskers do, I know Jeff is not going to be okay with that. But, but first off, why are you only using that for just only certain lights? Why wouldn't we do that for all lights in the city, the additional?
The leading pedestrian interval? So right now, we're working on a, a policy on how we do it, how many seconds we give. As I mentioned, downtown is all pre-timed. And so that, when you're out, not in downtown, those signals are called, what do you call it, actuated? So if a car comes up, it puts a call into the signal, the signal goes. If a pedestrian pushes a button, it puts a call in. It's very easy to add that extra five seconds because a call got put in and you're not adding that every time. Downtown, it would come up every time. So regardless of whether anybody was there 24 hours a day, you would have that extra three seconds.
And I think it's smart that we do it everywhere, whether you're calling or you don't. I mean, if we want to be safe or this is about safety, then that's the first thing that we should be doing. I don't think, if you need a policy change, then it needs to be on the next council agenda because I don't think any of us would object to that.
Yeah, no, actually, let us come back to you with that.
Yeah.
Because you will get complaints that cars will sit at a red light and see the pedestrian turn white.
When nobody is there.
And there's no movement at the intersection for three or four seconds, so.
We can probably deal with that complaint, along with the many others that we take for some of the actions that, that we put in place.
So let's put that together for me.
Yeah, that, that probably won't be that big of a deal. I mean, I'm sure people will be impatient, but they'll understand the safety portion of that.
Yeah, one other thing, just, just real quick, Councilman Simonson, you, you mentioned that we have different types of bike facilities. They're not always the same. I think that's because, you know, not every street's the same, right? There's different street contexts. There's different places, you know. We wouldn't want to put an on-street bike facility on, say, East, East 14th. There's just too much traffic. It's not a safe environment. And so it's just, you know, different tools in the toolbag, different options. Not every street's the same, therefore sometimes not every bike facility is the same, so.
Cory, I would not, I, I think if it wasn't a state highway, we would have bike lane on there now.
Well, you're trying to retrofit bike lanes into roads.
Because that, that has already been talked about at one point in time and was in a study with Grand Avenue and the, the other, but the state said we're not doing that, so.
Okay.
It was just an example.
I understand, probably the wrong example.
Mr. Sanders, let's get a discussion of the budget.
Yeah, so obviously we, there's a, a large cost that still comes with each one of these scenarios. There are some other decision points that make perfect sense to, to come to conclusion first, including DART. We have a situation where it's a 50/50 toss-up in what residents and even some of the conversations I've had with the restaurants and, and other businesses on Locust is that, that they've actually changed their minds and, and recognized that the two-way conversion would divert traffic onto a lane away from their business. So I, I, there's, it's such a jump ball situation that my recommendation, which we do not need today to come to a conclusion, is that this project will be delayed within the CIP as it comes back two to three months. Both from the cost standpoint, which is still high at the near $5 million, but also because we need better decisions to come out of the DART process to understand what impact that will have on, on this section.
Will you look at it 27, 28 that we're going to do it or?
Actually, at the moment, I think it's going to be indefinite. So you won't even see it on the 27 or 28.
So we're doing nothing?
Understand, understand, I need to present to you the entire CIP so that you, you also recognize the magnitude of, of the other cuts because there will be a package of cuts that include operations. So I appreciate the operational aspect to all CIP as well.
I, I think it's a good reminder that we got a lot of work to do this winter.
On the bud.
Yeah.
And were you going to do timelines?
The timelines, actually, why don't we go ahead and send that out to council? And then we can, we can bring that up at a future, but it's, it's very similar to last year's. We've got touchpoints with you in February and we are planning to get out into the public similar to what we've done last year in December at the wards. So ward council members, take specific attention to what you see from Nick on the opportunities within your wards. There's like five or six dates that we're throwing out there and we want your input as to location and which of those dates, a couple Saturdays are available and then some evenings as well to choose from. So take a look at that if you would and get back with Nick and I.
Thank you for all the presentation. Just a reminder to the council, we have a closed session at 3:45. The regular meeting will start at about 4:55 with a presentation. So until then, we will see you later this afternoon.